Welcome to the greatest of the greatest. A podcast that you never knew you needed. With interviews from people you have never met, or maybe you have once or twice. Asking questions and knowing more than you want to know about them. You are listening to Full Buddy Cast.
That's we're saving that we're saving that. All right. Well, everyone. Thanks for joining us. We got another full buddy cast with Tyson gambling. This is a follow up edition. Check your on his mic green a little bit and see if his, uh, what is that stat? Statitis?
Statitis with, uh, migraines.
Yeah, so bad. Just just pounding headaches.
They've subsided. So
That's good.
Just nothing that a little bull surreal and and a good TV show to to relax yourself to get yourself over a migraine.
I love it. Um, well, I forgot what I was going to ask you. So we're going to jump right into what? Uh, I was wondering, it was just, it was at the tip of my tongue and I wanted to talk about it, but I knew that it would go down a trail that I didn't want to go down without having, is that tattoo on your hand?
Oh, I, um, no, it's a stamp to get into an Enham Claw basketball game.
Nice. So because you are a elected. What are you?
I'm a school member.
The school board member, he may have gotten the, uh,
He probably voted for me in November. I was, uh, running, uh, unopposed. And I will be honest, there were three other school board, uh, members that were running unopposed and some of them got more votes than me and I was a little hurt. So.
Did they? They got more votes?
Some of them did. Yeah.
Are the people that we should like, like not have? They shouldn't have got more votes than you?
I don't know. I, I wrote it.
What are you saying right now? Everyone's gonna listen to this. Should I cut this out?
So, no, I, I
At the next, at the next school board meeting, uh, anything to talk about? Yeah. Tyson said on his, on this podcast that he thinks that he should have got more votes than me and I want to talk about that.
Yeah. So a big, big things happening on the school board though. Um, we had three positions. I was one of the positions and actually for the first time in 25 plus years, Nancy Merrill was not on the ballot. So Nancy
Retired.
She is done.
She took it off.
So, and then they, uh, honored the, the boardroom is now the Nancy Merrill boardroom now.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So they named it after her. I mean, and it's so being, I've been on the school board for a couple of years now and we go, uh, there's an annual conference, uh, that we always go to either every year it flip flops. One year it's in Bellevue, the next year it's in Spokane and and literally there's nothing like walking around in that conference next to Nancy Merrill. She is like the rock star.
Everyone knows.
Everyone knows Nancy Merrill and it's, and it's one of those things where you ever have a question, you just kind of look over at Nancy and just go, hey, Nancy, um, what's going on here? Like, what do we do? And Nancy Merrill is the most amazing woman ever and our district and our community has, you know, she is, I mean, 25 plus years. You think about that, that is crazy.
That is a lot. That is a lot.
And it's, um, but you know, she's been through a couple of superintendents, you know, been through a lot of, um, a lot of different things. She was part of the re, she was there during the reinvention, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, uh, grant. So she's also been during the reconstruction of the high school.
Wow.
Multiple new schools, sunrise elementary school and down her mountain. So
Which did she help out with the Black Diamond? Did you already mention that the Black Diamond School?
Yeah. So we, yeah, we just got the, so that was our last, uh, bond. We built the, uh, uh, we built Black Diamond and we built, um, the new high school. We did, redid the high school. So
Will that ever be broken off? Will Black Diamond become its own mini school district?
It will not be its own mini school district. Actually, um, with the ten trails, um, there are, one of the things that the school district negotiated with the, um, with them is that we actually have land given to us to build future schools.
Oh, great.
So we'll have, we'll probably build another elementary out there soon, um, with the growth there. Uh, we overbuilt, um, um, a little bit. There's things that you can't over, overbuild, but we built it to what we could, um, for Black Diamond, for the future growth in the next couple of years. But we will probably need to build a new elementary school out there in the next probably
High
Five years and then we'll go to a middle school, have a middle school built there. And then we actually have a land site for
A possible high school down the road.
A high school out there.
Wow. So in 20 years, it could look completely different.
Oh, absolutely. And it's, and the crazy thing is, which has got to be, you know, for parents that live in Black Diamond, I mean, that right where 10 trails is, is like, kind of like almost within like a couple of miles, there's this like, you have the Kent School District that, and then the Tahoma School District and the Auburn School District and Enham Claw. It's like these, you know, four corners where they all kind of collide a little bit. And so, you know, those students that will go to Black Diamond will be going to Enham Claw High School until they build their new high school there. And so
And are we, is it announced to, I could, this isn't live, right? Do people know about four A, three A, two A?
Yeah. Um, so every four years, the WIA reclassifies everyone. And, um, at one of our board meetings, uh, Mr. Stokie, who is the new athletic director of the high school, presented, uh, to the board that, um, he surveyed 15 coaches. I, I may not get these numbers exactly right. Um, so don't come to the school board meeting and tell me that I'm, I'm an idiot or I don't pay attention, just watching.
Do people do that?
Um, they can and they could. No, our school board meetings are really great. Like we have opportunities for public comment. And it's off, like, we want to hear from public comment, but it's also nice when you don't have, um, upset patrons. Um, so, but so Mr. Stokie presented and said, Hey, you know, where we fit in our current enrollment is that we're considered two A. Uh, we've been at three A level, um, for a couple of years and we've always played up to four A. And so polled the coaches and unanimously almost a hundred percent of the coaches voted to go down to two A.
Go, so go rather, so we play three A currently? Are we three A currently?
Four A right now.
How can we drop from four A to two A?
Because we, we were at, when they read, when four years ago, when WIA came out, we were at a three A level. And either you can, you can go up. So you can opt to go up, but then like, when you opt to go into a division, you have to be accepted by a league. So you just can't be like, Hey, we're going to be four A guys. And then like a league that's four A be like, Hey, that's great, but you're not playing in our league.
Right.
And so there's a little bit of, you know, politics involved. So for us, which was, is that the coaches decided they wanted to go to two A. So they actually sent a letter to the, the lead, the two A league and said, Hey, would you guys accept us in the two A league? And, um, they accepted us. So we're officially will be two A, will be one of the larger two A schools in the state. So, you know, I think there's this perception that, you know, all of a sudden we're going to win state championships left and right. Um, you know, it's, you know, some really good schools at two A.
Sure.
Um, but I don't, you know,
Is it farther traveling? Like, is there, like, what, what, what other schools are in two A?
Um, traveling is about the same. So you're going to get ordering, uh, White River. You're going to get some of the, um, Clover Park, Washington, Stilcom. Uh, Stilcom, I think is the farthest one away, which is not too far. Yeah. I mean, we used to play, um, a couple of years ago, we were playing Peninsula and that's all the way out in Purdy.
Wow.
Just across the Narrows and that's, that's pretty, that's a pretty, but you know, you gotta remember that, you know, some of the schools in Eastern Washington are traveling multiple hours, you know, for, for games and stuff like that. So, um, it'll be interesting to see. I know some sports, um, you know, we have a friend who works with the golf team and, you know, I think, I mean, they're going to win. I mean, I think they just, I mean, they've been really good at, you know, they've been in the running to winning state championships in the past. I think that they'll
This is going to help.
That'll help that.
That's good.
But, I mean, I, the feeling was that the big driver was football. Um, is that Enham Claws had some good football teams.
Right.
You know, they won a league championship not too long ago.
That's good basketball teams too.
Yeah, they've had some, you know, but they haven't done well in the postseason or postseason enough, you know, the last
Gotcha, gotcha.
The last, you know, last decade, we haven't had a team that's in the major sports. You know, basketball, football, volleyball, you know, go make a strong state title, um, run. And so, and there's something cool about that. Well, you know, for me, you know, I got a, the opportunity my junior year with, um, Tony, Craig, Ryan Clyde, Kyle. Those guys, you know, we took third in state and we actually, you know, we were considered, you know, you know, we could have won it, you know, and that, and there's nothing like it. And the, the community buzz, you know, that generates from that. The last, you know, team that I think was 2010, I think that was Riley's Riley Carroll, um, my brother's great Coleman Clyde. And that was a really good team. And, you know, there's something like when Enham Claws got a team in contention, but my concern is you, you don't see too many teams get write ups that are two A in the TNT Tacoma news.
Right, right, right.
Seattle Times. It's four A and three A.
Sure.
And so, yeah, Enham Claw should dominate, but that's not the cool story. It's the cool story when Enham Claws got a basketball team that's contending for a state title as a, as a three A, four A and as a complete underdog. And that's where it's really cool. And that's where you get, you know, the really feel goods, um, on that. But
I know that King five would do their home, you know, like who's going to play football? Where we're going to be at? Do they do that for two A?
I have no idea.
I think it's off.
Well, it, what's really scary is like, if you could just name, like, one of the things I did, I, you know, which was, I, I said to myself, could I name one of the final eight teams in the two A boys state championship tournament? And I think I got zero. I, I just don't know those teams because they've never been on our radar.
Right. And you don't see the publicity.
I'm sorry. I don't know where, I only know where Washougal is. I mean, I mean, like there's, there's schools that I've never heard of and I don't know where they're at. So, but it'll be an interesting thing. Yeah. So Enham Claws School District is two A, um, uh, going into next, next fall and they'll be playing White River in league. They'll be playing
That's pretty, and that, that's a cool part.
ordering in our league. And, and so that there is that, the rivalry between us will actually matter.
Right.
Um, you know, I've always, uh, Buckley's really never had a chance against Enham Claw and some of the sports.
Right.
For football. I mean, just, we're just bigger and we're, we're better.
Right.
Um, but now, yeah, we'll see how it all goes.
See how it goes. Uh, elected official.
Yeah.
We got some proposition or something. I get, I get this thing in the mail. I saw your, I saw your face on it.
We have, uh, the tech levy out right now. And so what that is
Buying 3D printers.
Yeah. 3D printers and, uh, smart boards and, um, you know, one of the tech levy things that we did four years ago was to get, um, Chromebooks into all the students' hands. And that was like, and it took a long time to get the students with the Chromebooks.
Right.
Um, and so it's pretty amazing to see, you know, that allows a lot of students who didn't, don't have access to technology or their family can't afford. And
Gets them familiar with all of that.
I mean, you probably have some Chromebooks in your house.
I do. I do. The funny thing is, and I was thinking about this yesterday when I saw my daughter Madden, who's 16 sophomore in high school. And she's, she's working this poster board thing and she's cutting things out. She's writing things in, doing things when I was a kid. And yet she's got this Chromebook and I thought, how come they're not using the Chromebook for like putting together PowerPoints and, and I'm sure they are, and maybe every once in a while they have to do these, cut that out and make it look like a, a presentation. But I just was, I guess I just was surprised. I thought that perhaps that would kind of, that the arts and crafts, cutting things out, writing things out, making this, this presentation would kind of die out and it would be this new, we're going to put together a slideshow and this and that instead.
Yeah.
But they do use it. They use it all the time.
They do it all. They use it all the time and each class and each teacher uses it a little differently, which is kind of, you know, unique. Uh, one of the things that we, you know, our, our mission statement for the, uh, the school district changed about a year and a half ago, where we wanted kids to, you know, basically we don't want teachers to teach for a test or statewide tests or an exam on that. We want, we want our teachers to feel, to try new things. Try to wait to reach kids, get them excited about learning, excited about, you know, deep, you know, impactful things. And so some of the things are, uh, project based learning. And one of the cool things that I get to do on the school board is that we have two meetings a month. And one month is our official, uh, board meeting where we, you know, um, approve the, the budget and the, um, basically to pay teachers, we, we approve paying teachers, um, and we put in new policies and stuff like that. But the other meeting is really cool is that we get to go visit each school. So, uh, my last visit, we were at, uh, Kibler.
Yeah.
And Mike's, uh, daughter, Jalen.
Oh, nice.
She's co, uh, Kibler president.
Oh, she is.
And so it's really cool because the principal goes over all the things that they're doing, but at the same time that every school has a different spin on it. And so that they're bears and they were going to take us on a, a, a journey and watch out for bears. And so they were, they had their walking sticks and they were taking us through the bear journey of how they, um, you know, some of the different things that their school, they take pride in, what they are working on, um, either, you know, what they do at assemblies, you know, um, what are their policies for, um, you know, behavioral things and that, and every school has a little different, you know, touch to it. And so that's the coolest part. And then the other part is, is that what, there's this new thing out with math. And what it is, is that you use math on a, uh, like on a whiteboard and you use it on a vertical, vertical board is what they call it. Cause we're used to sitting, doing math, sitting down.
Right.
And, you know, but then like you watch like a beautiful mind and you watch the guy like with his like marker.
Yeah.
He's Mr. Like Nash is like just going to town on the walls at Princeton and you're like, oh, that's so cool. It's like, or it's like even Good Will Hunting, good movie, by the way. It's like what Good Will Hunting, by the way, is like one of those movies that like, if it's on like, like Saving Private Ryan and Good Will Hunting, like if I'm flipping through channels, it's on TNT. I'm like,
You're watching it.
I'm done. I'm like, it's like,
Found it.
It's like, how about them apples?
That's so funny because I just recorded with my brother yesterday and we performed a scene out of, uh, out of it of, uh, it's, it's not your fault.
Oh, it's not, it's not your fault.
It's not your fault.
It's not your fault. I mean, that movie's so good because, and at the same time, he's like Ben Affleck and they won the Academy Award for that, for screenplay.
Yeah.
And they're so young.
Super young. Yeah.
And so it was so funny. Uh, I gotta tell you this. I had, I'm terrible at accents, but, um, I was in, we were going to Nantucket of all places. And so one of the things you fly into Boston and you drive a, you drive your car down and then you go to this port and it's Hyannis and literally, and it's just a free for all. Cause I mean, everyone's trying to get to Nantucket and those islands and stuff like that. And literally it's like, you go to these peoples and there's parking lots and like people are renting out their yards and literally this guy just goes, hey, you can park your car in my neighbor's yard. And we're like, and I'm like, what? She's like, you can park your car in my neighbor's yard. And I'm like, all right, I'm, I'm in Massachusetts now. Like I, I, my life is now complete.
Did you, did you park your car?
I totally parked my car in the neighbor's yard.
Yeah. You can't do accents. I can't do them either.
I can't. I wish I could.
I'm the worst at them too.
I, I'm, but
That was actually good. I'm surprised. Yeah.
Okay. Well,
Hey, I'm here. You parked the car in the neighbor's yard. Anyway, so, uh, we were talking about Chromebooks and the beautiful mind and writing it all up.
So, and one of the things, so we're at Kibler and they did some problems with us. They're like, Hey, you know, I got stuck with the kindergartners.
Nice fun.
Yeah. And so they basically, they would do a word problem, like, which is, you know, this has six, it has six, six lines. What shapes can you make with six lines? So the kids are, you know, on the whiteboard and, you know, it was pretty fun to, and then listening to them to do something.
Right.
And then, um, the month before I was at Southwood and they had this, they're do these number things where they have dots. And they flash it for 15 seconds and they're like, well, how many dots? And, and I'm counting like one, two, three, four, five, you know, as quick as I can. And the kid just goes, well, I saw two dice. I saw three dice, one with five, one with three and one. And so that's nine. And I was like, wait, you saw dice? And I'm like, I didn't even see that.
I should see that.
I should see dice. I craps is, I love craps. It's like, it's like, how did you not? And so
Wow.
So, and it's kind of fun to see, you know, and that's the best part is that I'm, we're not listening to teachers talk. So some of the students will come in.
Yeah.
And they'll, and they'll talk, uh, which is awesome. And it's always fun because I get to see friends, um, and their kids and they'll get, they'll present. And so, at sunrise, they, um, a teacher did a series on how to get a boat across a pool of water. And then they did some FaceTime with an actual hydroplane racer. And so like, and they would ask them questions and that, that's the cool thing about, about technology is, is how kids can reach out to like other places in the world and communicate and talk. And that, that is
That's way cool.
It's really cool. And, you know,
So we should be voting yes then is what you're saying.
Yeah. Vote yes for the technology levy. It, it, it allows us to have opportunities of putting devices in kids' hands.
Right.
And, and it's not just that, but it's also expanding us. How do we find, you know, it's just, technology is the future. But there's also this weird trend going on right now where there's this huge need for, um, you know, skilled, skilled jobs like, um, iron workers.
Right.
And, um, construction workers and, and so, which has been, when I was in high school, you know, almost 20 years ago, which is crazy to think is that, you know, everyone's like, oh, you gotta go to college, have to go to college, have to go to college. And all of a sudden there's this shift back to like, well,
Trade school, trade.
Trade school's great. College is great. You know, you have a lot of options and, and I think, you know, the focus is not to get kids to just go to college. It's just finding what, you know, what you enjoy.
Right.
And then in trying to find a pathway to that. So the high school's really trying to get, um, they just had their, um, stated the education address. And it was their theme, uh, was Enham Claws Got Talent.
I like it.
And so they had all the different CTE and STEM or STEAM, you know,
Ice steam.
Yep. Come out and share what they're doing. You had robotics, you had, you know, um, FFA stuff is amazing what those kids, what they do.
And they got the ice team coming up because I know that we, that, uh, the work I'm at, I'm not going to mention it, but the work I'm at, uh, yeah, it's got to make sure on it. Is that, uh, I volunteer over there. And in the past few years I've done it. This year I wasn't able to do it. I might stop in with the kids, but, but, uh,
Yeah. The, the, the I C D Mexico at, um, the Enham Claw Expo Center is awesome. It's, it's amazing how much cool stuff is. So I recommend like, if you haven't been to it, go to it, take your kids with you.
Check it out. It's packed. It's fun though. And you're going to see a lot of displays. You're going to see a lot of cool things people are working on. You're going to see a lot of people put their, from coding to flying flight simulators to, uh, Lego areas you can build to, uh, fly in a little hover things. I mean, there's a, it reminds me of the Pacific Science Center.
Oh, yeah.
Just like for like a night, if you were looking for a real quick, like not driving all the way out there, but I loved the Pacific Science Center back in the day. And it's kind of like a mini one, uh, that night.
Yeah. And it's tons of hands on stuff, tons of
Do we know the date? Sorry. Uh, we can look it up, but
We can look it up. Um, I know that they're actually having the Enham Claws Schools Foundation, which is not part of the school district, but they work closely with, which help give, um, scholarships and donations to classrooms. And one of the things that they've done in the past, one of the big ones is, is that they've brought theater to all kids, which is they used to bus kids to the theater at the performing arts center in, at the high school and perform for the elementary school kids, but then they've also gone and done perform. And they'll actually perform a play at their assemblies. Was it? And so that costs money.
Yeah.
And the schools foundation will, you know, give grants for them to do some of the stuff. And so they actually have a big luncheon fundraiser here in the next couple of weeks, but there's a lot of cool stuff going on with schools. And one of the things is people sometimes ask like, why did you run for school board? And I just feel like it's, I feel like there's got to be someone who's going to be a champion for public education.
You know, and, and I like that. Sorry. I'm going to cut you off. I know you're about going in your big spiel.
Well, I am a, I'm a politician.
You're a politician now. We're talking about that, but I want to get those dates out. February 11th is the levy that needs to be.
Yes.
You vote by eleven.
Vote yes.
But the 13th
For our kids.
Two days later is the ice team. Unfortunately, that's a bummer that it doesn't flip flop.
Yeah.
Because you could go there, see what's going on and then vote. Here it's a day, two days after.
I, I, I will tell some of the campaign people, that, that, that's what they should do. That's a good idea.
Yeah. Um, so you're an elected official.
Yes.
I want to go backwards in time, backwards in life. You ran for, uh, uh, office in high school.
Yeah. So, you know, I did the freshman class president thing, you know, that was a whole lot of work.
Did you get it?
Of course I got it.
I don't know. I wasn't there.
Uh, and then, well, you were a senior.
Was I a senior?
Yeah. I was a freshman and you were a senior.
You graduated O three?
Oh, three.
No joke. I thought you were a little bit younger than that. I thought you were O four.
I, I kind of take that as a compliment.
Yeah. You're a young guy.
With my, my bald head and
That, that's amazing. That's good. Well, congratulations. Oh,
Oh, thanks. And well, then that was like my first, like, like
Actually I do remember you. I think there's a, is there a sweaty picture of you somewhere in some yearbook?
Yeah. It's just a stud. There's greatness just oozing out of me. That was like one of my first lessons of leadership as my freshman year. Like I remember it and like it's still vivid in this day, but it's where we had to decorate the halls. Remember that first?
Yes.
For, um, and I, I was not going to do it. Like, uh, that's not me. Like, I'm not going to decorate anything. So I found, I asked around some of my freshman classmates and I was like, Hey, who wants to decorate this hall? And they're like, I'll do it. And they're like, sweet. And I was like, this is leadership delegation. And like, I thought I was such a bad A for like, I, I'm a good leader. I delegated. Yeah. Yeah. I'm totally cool. But, um, and then the person I delegated actually ran for sophomore class president and
They were.
Well, they didn't run against me. I was like, I'm not going to do this again. I thought it was too cool for school.
But then you ran again.
Yeah. I, uh, one of my, uh, my big failed campaigns in life was I ran for ASB president and I went on the campaign is that my initials Tyson Allen Gamblin spelled tag.
Yes.
And tag.
You're it.
You're it. Vote tag for ASB president. And so I really didn't even know who I was running against. I just knew I was running against Jake Newman. And I really didn't know too much about Jake. A huge underestimated Jake.
Cause you were the campaign, the war room, just
So I, I ran this really, you know, well thought out campaign. By which, speaking of TV shows, I gotta watch, I think there's that, the
Jag?
No, there's on, there's a Netflix show called, uh, The Politician or something like that, where it's a high school where he runs for like a, Gwyneth Paltrow's in it. And she doesn't light her candle. Um, so, but anyways, so I run this campaign and then like Jake would put up some really random, you know, posters like, which is like, do you like puppy dogs and rainbows? Vote Jake Newman. So it was just like, kind of like, it was pretty funny. Like a little clever, you know, pretty out there. So we get to the speech. So I got the speech. I got it all written out. And so one of the big things was like, you know, this big fear that we're going to lose the pool and we're going to lose swimming. So I was like, all right, I'm going to, I'm going to strip down two swim trunks.
Oh.
Uh, yeah. Not a speedo though. I, I wasn't too brave.
I was kind of hoping you would. I kind of liked that.
So, you know, I started giving my speech in front of the school. And I'm like, you know, and we gotta save our pool. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Gosh, it's just, it's, it's just like an Arrested Development. What's this kid's? Steve, Steve Holt, Steve Holt.
Steve Holt.
Steve Holt. And then in a little moment like, Odonto rules, Billy Madison for you. So it's like, yeah, nip my football rules. So I get my speech and then like, I don't see Jake there. Like, where's Jake? All of a sudden like, and Jake Newman and like, I'm, I have just painted this picture. It's like, all of a sudden the side doors of the gym open up. Like smoke comes out.
No way.
Jake comes running out in a corn costume, like a cornstalk. Like he's a corn. He's a piece of corn. And he just comes out dancing. Yeah. And I'm just like, what the frick? And it was so funny. And he's just like, yeah. Who dresses up like as a corn? And everyone's like, I don't know. And then, and just everyone just laughing so hard. And I'm like, I'm going to lose this. I'm, I'm going to lose this. And of course the ballots came in, I lost.
By how much? Do you know?
Oh, I don't know. Probably a landslide.
So Nate Mensah, he won when we were, when, when we were seniors and I don't know if your sister was running. I feel like she may have been running in some capacity. I know that she, she was always
Who was the SP president? Who?
Nate Mensah, Nathan Mensah. I know you, it's a guy that you, people wouldn't really necessarily know, wasn't a very flashy guy, smart kid, but, but wasn't a very, uh, partier. He wasn't the comedian. He's a, he was a pretty funny guy, but
I think that's like, like, if you're going to
A regular dude.
Like in high school, it's like the funny guy's always going to win.
Well, let me just tell you the line. So he said, this is what got it. Like, you know, you're kind of sitting there, kind of slumped over. You're kind of like, uh, you know, why, why even here and listen to this thing? I know who I'm going to vote for already. I know who I'm gonna vote for already. And then this is the first time in the history of the world where. It that it changed. Maybe it changed again. Maybe a lot of people think you and then the corn came out, but he goes. I come up here and promise you guys new breaks and I can come, you know, hey, we're gonna get another break or we're gonna get another vending machine or, you know, hey, we're gonna get. Four days off. I can say all that. We that we all know that's not the truth. Uh I could also come out here and say that uh I'd love everybody here. And I honestly don't like lots of you. I'm just here because this is gonna look good on my college resume. College application.
I love it.
Everyone voted for him because they were like.
Who did you run against? Do you remember?
That's the thing. It's like four people and I.
Oh, seriously? They are probably all the ones like, oh, this would so get me into Stanford. So get me into Columbia.
I think a lot of people were like, like those guys were like, as soon as they get, as soon as he started being honest and real, it was like, people were like, alright, we're gonna vote for that kid.
I stripped. I lost to a corn. So crazy story about this, though. The best part about all this is so I end up in leadership class and I'm with Jake. And so I go play football at Central. Jake goes to Central. We're college roommates our freshman year.
Oh, shut up.
Yeah, so we're college roommates our freshman.
You guys still keep in touch here and there?
Oh, not too much.
Facebook?
No, not.
Greatest two thousand and two athlete.
Well, this is comes off the heels of the induction of the Hall of Fame.
Yeah.
Which is Ty Waterson was inducted.
Right.
And then Allison Tubbs was inducted. And I I ran track my freshman and sophomore year. I didn't do it my junior senior year. So I actually, you know. I knew enough people in track um that ran and Allison was legit like.
That's what you were saying. You were you were.
She she would she would beat the boys.
It's insane the stats that you were throwing out and the opinions.
Is that like she won a huge race, a nat she ran a national race. Like she was published in like like well, like Runner magazines. Like she was the next like. Great American runner. She was considered one of those. And like, I mean, she won state in the two mile by fifty seconds. She almost lapped the whole field.
Wow.
Which is at at the state championship. So I mean, like she was.
And then she had the fastest time?
She had what she she held one of the fastest times in the nation at one point. So I mean, I mean, she was so dominant. It was unreal and it and she's awesome. And you know, she is super nice, but then there's Ty. Ty was, you know, I think he was considered, I I I he went undefeated. He took second his junior year. He went undefeated in wrestling his senior year. And I think he might have been a a concerned All American. And then he wrestles at Oregon and has, you know, a great.
Phenomenal.
He he take, he took fourth and you know, he he broke his arm his freshman year and he didn't get a medical red shirt. They messed up the paperwork. And he should have got a medical red shirt. So when he was wrestling his junior year, I mean, his senior year, which should have been his red shirt junior year.
Right.
He took fourth. And if he had another year, there's a good chance he probably could have. He could have been a national champion. So. And I feel so bummed because I was planning on going to that. I was going to it.
On Friday night.
But this last month, Gamble Motors has been giving away a car.
Every.
Every Friday night for the month of January at the casino. And that's been.
Did that person take it?
Of course, we tell them to take it. They we don't give them a choice.
Yeah.
But so which is because what happens is is it's pretty crazy is that so it's twenty five people. And it's one through twenty five and the first person who gets picked, they say, hey, what key do you want? Key one through twenty five. And they're like, I want keys eleven. Then the second person's like, what key do you want? And they're like, I'll take twenty two. And then it goes through on. So first person goes up, he grabs his key and he hits the unlock button. And if the lights go off.
It's his.
It's his. So the first night, so I'm I'm a betting guy. So I'm just watching. I'm like, alright, I think this guy's got it. I think, hey. I think this big Asian guy, he's got it. And so so and then my brother's like, no, I think, look at this guy. This guy doesn't care. He is not gonna, you know, he just. And of course, it's the second guy and he's and he walks up there, hits the key, lights go off. You literally look like, like, yeah, whatever, dude. Like, like, like emotionless, like, like not. And then all of a sudden, like sixty seconds later, like legitimately a minute later, all of a sudden you just. This woman coming out of the crowd like knocking people over. She's like, hey, what? It's her. It's her husband.
Wow.
It's his wife. And and he's like, yeah, I won. I just. And she's like, he didn't even hear his name. I'm told him he he was even in this. He's like, yeah, I just won like three grand at the the slot when they called my name. So, yeah, I just won a car, so. So the second winner is is Mr. And Mrs. Moon from Vietnam.
No.
Where Mrs. Moon, she's the so the first night, it was the second person. And this is like the worst thing about the whole thing is that. They make everyone, even if like they've won the car, they all have to come up and hit their key because they have to prove. That there is only one key. So all these people are like, why am I doing this? Like, this is stupid. And it's like, I I agree. It is stupid, but.
Gotta make it look like, yeah.
There's only one key that worked. The second is um. The third person, so the the second person, the first night, the third person was Mrs. Moon, the next Friday night, she won it. And I don't think Mrs. Moon maybe said maybe two two words.
Yeah.
But her but her husband, Mr. Moon, he 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 was stoked. He was in it. Um to the point where he's like, I'll see you next Friday. I'm gonna win the other one. We're like, yeah, I don't think so. So last week, the third, the third week. It is everything you think winning a car should be.
Oh, wow.
So and and we're we're going deep because the first two are like first or second people that like top four people that the car won. We're all the way up to like maybe person number nineteen, twenty. So we're down to like the final five or six. So it's getting tense. This gal walks up and. She needs a car. So. And. Hits the unlock button and full on meltdown, collapses to the ground, tears in her eye. I won. I won. Oh, my God. I won. And then runs up, hugs the car.
Oh, did you take the picture or was your brother?
My brother starts kissing the car. Oh, I gotta call my husband. I'm gonna call my husband. Calls the husband, here, talk to him. She hands me the phone and he just goes, does she just faint? And I just go, no. And she goes, oh, because she does that sometimes. And I'm like, no, it's like, so. And then there's the dog barking in the background and she's like. And she, I mean, he's like, and so is this like a joke? I'm like, no, she really won. He's like, wait, what? I'm like, no, like she really won the car. He's like. And then the dogs start barking more. And I'm like, what is happening here? So so the casino offers them. Twenty five thousand dollars cash or the car. And the car is valued like it's like forty four thousand dollar MSRP car.
Yeah.
Or they and then in the contract with with them is that it's written that they have an option to spend forty thousand dollars at our dealership. So they take the car twenty five thousand dollars, then take cash twenty five thousand dollars or have a forty thousand dollars credit. But if they buy the blazer, which was a selling price around forty grand, this is where a lot of people always forget, like you win, you have to pay tax.
Taxes.
Tax title license. So which is, you know, forty forty thousand dollar car, you're looking roughly almost four thousand dollars.
Right.
So in this case, you know, we end up, you know, we found in a car where we could keep it under forty thousand dollars.
And have her pay for.
Yeah, have have the casino pay for everything. So pretty cool.
That's way cool.
And so everyone that didn't win, um they got five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So I mean.
They get something. That's kind of cool.
But it was pretty tense like going into that the because the first two were just like the it was like either the first, like it was the guy. The second guy to go hit it and then like the fourth person to go hit it the next night. This went all the way almost to the final like five.
So. What like is this the first time you guys have done this? Or does this happen quite like you guys do this once a year every January or what?
No, so um. No, because the the promotions are always different. And so one of the interesting things is that the casino gave away. Um a Mercedes a couple like a year ago and it didn't go very well. Like it just, the Mercedes dealership really didn't help them. And then like. Well, the Mercedes dealership did something really stupid, which was they put like the most expensive car, but they weren't winning that most expensive car. So there's a little bit and plus. As I've been told, the Muckleshoot Casino is like the Walmart of casinos. It's not the flashiest, but everyone goes to Walmart.
Right.
Um and Walmart makes a lot of money because the casino does make a ton of money. It's one of the wealthiest Indian uh tribe running casinos. Uh in the nation. And but I'm interested to see with some of the changes because now they got their event center being built right now.
Right, they got their.
And then they got they got the hotel coming.
Yeah.
And that's gonna open up a whole nother level of, you know, making a little bit of a destination, you know, go against the Tulalips and stuff like that, but. Um but yeah, that's. It's so but they they've done some car giveaways. Luckily for us is, you know, I have some connections there where I've, you know. Um but they uh but I've given a a couple cars away before. Uh we've given away um actually some sparks before.
I own one.
Yep. Um and then we've also given, you know, I've given away a few Buicks. At some other just different type events stuff, but this is like a full on promotion where they, I mean, like they put our logo in some of their TV commercials.
Oh, yeah.
Which was like, sweet. I was like, awesome. And they, you know, tagged us in some Facebook, social media stuff. And so it's been awesome.
I may have visited a couple of times in in January and you had the car parked on the walkway, nice little, you know, kind of roped off. Just a little bit, but it was a nice display all around it and you could see your guys' emblem on the side of it as well.
They let us keep our logos on the stuff, which is pretty cool.
That was way cool. Yeah. So well, good. I hope that you guys do that uh maybe one other time this year.
I would love it. I mean, hopefully, you know, what we're really trying to do and they keep on, you know, busting my chops is they want a new twenty twenty Corvette. And those are so the twenty twenty Corvette just moved to a mid engine. It's it's um. One Motor Trend Car of the Year. And when they released the car, there was so much fanfare over it. They actually came to the dealers and said, hey, you're going to get X amount of Corvettes to your name.
I see.
So we got six, which was a lot higher than I thought we would get, you know, and like some other dealers. So I started calling around to these dealers and I said, hey, you know, like, how many you got? And like, oh, I got twelve or I got ten or I got eight. Um some got like three. And they're like, I was like, what are you selling these for? And they're like. Um some dealers were selling like five grand over MSRP, but we decided to sell ours for MSRP. And so what we did is we let our customers, because we were getting phone calls every day. So we basically started taking deposits of like people in line and. I we sold out of our first six within like a couple of days.
Oh, wow.
People taking their order. But the casino wants one.
Yeah.
And so I'm gonna try to figure out a way where I can get my hands.
On another one.
But which is super, super tough because.
Everyone, it's they're for the most part sold out.
Yeah, I mean, I've I've heard I've heard rumors already that like some people who've gotten their first initial order in have already posted the car on eBay for like. Double the money.
Oh, my gosh.
But.
I mean, if you can do it.
Yeah.
It's what it sounds like an Andrew thing, but I mean. It was Andrew, one of those guys that bought it?
Bought the car. I'm gonna flip it. You know what I can sell this on eBay for? I'll just drive this Ferragamo tie.
Drive it for a couple of days.
It's got donkeys on it. It's so cool. Look at my Eton shirt with the tacos and the ice cream. My brother doesn't sound like that, but those are the kind of things he says.
Your your brother sounds like this. When when I'm playing, when I'm playing with him, he's like, I can I can never tell sometimes what he's saying. But he's he's got like a mic voice. It's just a deep voice and he's kind of.
You know, when he was younger, we called him Mini Me of Hips.
Oh, really? You know what? I went to Mike, we went to Mike's uh uh bachelor, not bachelor party. Mike's like family barbecue at his new house when he first got it. And Andrew and Hips were there. And we took a picture side by side and with the sun, just a little bit of a glare and they looked.
Yeah, and they they stand kind of similar, like they're they're how they stand and how they they move is very, very similar.
Yeah. Uh I play with him online now. We need to get, we need to get you back on that. Um except he's gone offline. And I don't know if it's because of me or for others. He used to, I used to see Autumn Pear pop up.
Uh and I don't know.
And now now he's offline.
Every time I want to go play, it's like, I'm like, alright, I'm ready to go play. And then it's like, also, it's like, oh, hey, by the way, you have a five hundred gigabyte. Download that it'll be down uh tomorrow at seven o'clock in the morning if you want to play. It's like, alright, well, I'm gonna go eat my bowl of ice cream and. What's what's new on Netflix?
Oh, man. Yeah, he uh but his his friends, Joe and Jack or Joe, whoever those guys are, do they get intense? They yell, like they get angry with each other.
Uh yeah, that's.
Just so angry.
It's just a millennial thing.
It is. Well, I feel like.
We we got we got a couple more minutes here.
We got a couple more minutes. Is there anything you want to wrap it up with?
Well, I felt like we spent a lot of time on school stuff. Um so and I talked about my campaign. You know, and there's just some cool stuff in Enemclaw. I mean, you know, what's 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 let's talk about what's new in Enemclaw.
Absolutely.
I mean, I know, you know, how cool is the new Kelly's Lounge?
So good. Real quick, if you want a great drink, I've talked about it before, but the smoked old fashioned delicious. And I don't know when charcuteries became such a huge hit anywhere you go now.
What?
A charco- a charcuterie board, charcuterie board. Am I saying that right?
What is that?
So it comes out on a wood slab and you got meats that are thinly sliced and different types of cheeses and some crackers and some jellies. And so it's usually for wine or to having a drink, but it's like a little snack board. But you'll go to these different, like I went to a a party. And people bring these things now. It's not like bringing like your five layer nacho dip.
It's like cheese and cheese and meats.
But it's like, it's like, it's like a nicely.
You know, I think.
Like little small pickles and.
I'm in an event. I think I should like invent like a tray.
Yeah.
And like have it like mini like cereal bowls.
Ooh.
Like put like a little Fruit Loops in one.
I do like that. I almost feel that people would get their grimy little fingers on all that.
No, just get, just give me a giant bowl and a giant spoon. We're good to go.
So uh yes, so Kelly's is beautiful.
Downtown Enemclaw's hopping. They got, they got, the restaurants are good.
Best dessert, where do you go?
Uh I go to the Rainier.
Me too.
Yeah.
Best dessert.
Best dessert. Yeah. See, the here's the thing is, it's like, I love Jill and I love the Rainier. I just gotta create a little bit of ventilation. It's like I can smell myself. I have to wash my clothes after going there because it just there's so much.
That's how you feel?
Smoke. And it was just, yeah, because this, the worst by far is the mint. The mint is awful. Like you smell like a grease fire. I mean, like, literally, you go to the mint and then smell your clothes. It's so bad.
How do you feel going to the ski?
No, see, I was actually thinking about this. It's like, it's like how, like I honestly thought to myself, like I I I honestly want to start a Gmail account called. True Enemclaw Reviews at gmail dot com. And I want to be the guy that goes in and just starts reviewing like establishments. Like as a true Enemclaw person would. So like, I want to be like.
You watch your own show?
Which is like the ski in. It's like, it's like, yes, it looks like what it sounds like. It is awful. I just go, and yes, one of your friends most likely was conceived on the back couch.
Oh, yeah.
And it's like, and then it's like, that's like the Lee. You really don't know if you're going to Lee unless you've run into Mavis.
Mavis and Doug. Doug and Mavis. That is absolutely correct. Yes.
Literally, like you could start the Enemclaw Reviews at Gmail and like actually go onto Gmail and like, give them five stars. Don't be, don't be rude. But then it's like this, the Maui room, the closest thing to walking into a strip club when, but then you realize it's not a strip club.
Dude, we went there, we went there over the weekend, Mike, uh Mike, Katie, me, Jamie and Bobby. Oh, it was ridiculous.
True value. Definitely not open now for seven.
We don't, we don't talk about that.
So but like, think about like, I I there's an opportunity there to be kind of clever, but like, give us the true Enemclaw reviews.
I think there should be a passport, a photo passport where, like you said, go take a picture yourself on the on the couch in the back of the ski. And then and then each and you have these different things that you have to go do. One, you you haven't.
Enemclaw Bingo.
Yes. Oh, Enemclaw Bingo. That's a great idea.
It is a good idea. And I know we've done Enemclaw Golf.
We've done golf. Uh Cedars, get a picture with Chris O'Connes. Yep.
So like one of my favorite, one of my favorite, like, oh. I just knocked something off the wall. I'm so excited about this story. Um so. Something fell from the ceiling. One of my favorite Cedar moments ever though was one of my buddies from high school. Did he he didn't have his wallet with him, but he had his passport. They wouldn't let him in to the bar with his passport. And they're like, oh, we need a driver's license. He's like, this is a passport. Like this is like. More proof of an identification than a driver's license. Like, no, sorry, bro. Need a driver's license. He's like. I can get into other countries with this.
I can't get into.
But I I can't get into other countries with a driver's license. Like this is the most legit.
Okay, full, full, uh whatever they call that. What are they? Disclosure. I. Denied people beer one time at Safeway when I was a checker because they had a passport. They didn't have a, they didn't have a driver's license. I had no clue. This guy looked at me like, bro.
From Selig. I don't even know what that is. What is this? What is this?
He's like, he's like, dude, this is my passport. And I'm like, yeah, I need a driver's license. He's like, this is a passport. I like literally what you said almost word for word. I could get into other countries. I'm like. Driver's license, bro.
The Safeway of safe country is Safeway doesn't allow you to drive beer, bro.
I think they, I think he even showed me his military ID too. And I'm like, eh, not a driver's license. Yeah, it was so.
Check the policy, policy one thirteen right there.
I will call the cops.
I am, I am anticipating to be employee of the month here at Safeway.
You wanna, do you want a disgusting story, uh, that I can tell you that people listen to this? Or do you not want a disgusting story?
Let's, let's go.
Okay. It's a terrible story.
All right, I'm ready.
Okay, so one night when I was working at Safeway, it was night crew. I was checking till like midnight. Two drunks came in, guy and a girl. And this girl came up and she flashed me.
Oh.
Not the top part.
Oh.
Yeah. She pulled it down and she goes, you like what you see? You like what you see?
Bold, bold strategy.
I had no clue what she was talking about because I kind of got that barrier between us. And, and I'm like, I'm like, uh huh. And she's like, she backed up so she could show me. And I'm like, ah, ah, it was pukable.
Was it like one of those Borat movements? You'll never get this, you'll never get this.
It was so bad.
Castle, I got a chair.
It was so bad. Yeah. So, yeah, no. Yeah. Safeway, Safeway was a little weird. Yeah. And I didn't know as that their passports were as good as, as drivers licenses.
Love that you didn't do it. No, so Eden Claw reviews, true, true Eden Claw reviews where it's like, it's like, you really don't know if you've experienced the kettle unless you've met Mama Stotts.
Yeah, get a picture of Mama Stotts.
So I mean, there's a lot of cool Eden Claw.
Or Jack Stotts. Get a double, you get double points.
Triple points if Jack is in his cutoff.
Oh, so good.
No, there's a lot of cool, a lot of cool, fun, exciting things. So, well, I gotta talk about Eden Claw real quick though.
You are.
So I, I have sales meetings at.
Okay.
At, uh, seven thirty, no, eight thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
I live on McHugh Street. So two Saturdays ago.
I heard about this. Go, yeah.
It took me twenty-five minutes.
Crazy.
From McHugh to the dealer, the main store dealership down by Mazel toon.
Right.
Twenty-five minutes. I have never seen anything like it in my whole life in Eden Claw. So I normally go down on McHugh, all the way down to the Pickle Factory Road. And then I get down there and it's bumper to bumper. I was like, all right, I'm gonna flip around, flip around, go through town. And like, all right, okay, I'm gonna go, and I was like, all right, I'm gonna sneak on to four ten. I'm at four ten's at Fugit's bumper to bumper. F this. Go through Fugit's bumper to, go through their lot.
Yeah.
Go around, loop around, come through, behind Safeway and then go through Taco, the little sneak around Taco Time and then jump in. And I was like, and then I was stuck on four ten. And I had a sales meeting and I was like, I gotta, I gotta get to my sales meeting. I have stuff to print off. So I ended up just driving down the shoulder on like oncoming traffic through the kidney center and then through Mazel toon to the dealership. But twenty-five minutes, it took me twenty-five minutes. And like now it's changed the whole crystal thing where crystal now you can't buy tickets up at, at.
Right.
At the.
Online only and.
And then, but it was, and then like my, my wife's sister and her husband, like they've stayed with us and they have icon passes. And they've stayed with us because they don't want to drive all the way from Seattle to go up there. And it's like, they said, it's just a zoo for parking. I mean, and it's like, but I've, it was the craziest thing I've ever experienced in my whole life in Eden Claw.
That's what I heard. I heard people posting about it and this and that.
So the worst part about it, I text like my, my sales team. I'm like, hey, sales meeting is going to be delayed, you know, get here, when you get here, we'll probably do it like, you know, quarter till or something like that. So I'm in the office, you know, and it's uh, eight thirty, I'm about to start the sale. All of a sudden, like the traffic just disappeared.
Oh, no way.
Just like literally, like it was like, it was like, it was there for like an hour and a half. And then like, like, and then everyone's like, I said, what are you talking about? Like, there's like, it's like, I was like, I thought he was joking, but I had like one of my team members. They had, they opened at seven thirty in our service department. She parked at our truck center and walked.
I heard, yeah. I heard about that too. She walked and she actually like, like said, okay, marked a car that she would have been, been at. And she like got there before that car would.
Yeah, insane. So crazy.
That is crazy. That's, yeah.
It's all these out of towners that coming in here and putting their liberal generals and the homeless. I don't feel safer on the library anymore.
Me neither.
Gosh.
Me neither.
Can we just, can we do like a, a show called the Eden Claw page?
I, I want to do the, oh, we do that.
The, you know, actually, you know what we should do is we should just, we should make clippings of the Eden Claw page and literally read them off like.
Dude, I cannot stand, I love watching, reading the Eden Claw community because some of the people that, uh, run it are admins.
So there's two of them. There's the Eden Claw community.
Right.
And then there's the, the free for all Eden Claw.
No, not that one.
Oh, the, the free for all Eden Claw one is like, you've got a shower after reading.
Yeah, the Eden Claw community one that's, that's regulated, the, what I've noticed that one of the.
Why'd you delete my comment? Why did the admin delete my comment?
The admin though will say, sorry, you can't promote this, promote that. But then they do it in their posts.
Oh, yeah.
It's crazy how they'll let, they'll do it, but they won't let other people do it.
Well, it's funny because like, I think, I don't know if it's still like Bo Chevissou, who's like a city council member. I think he's banned from that. And I think, like who runs a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Like Christian.
You're right.
It's like, what did Bo do that got him banned?
He was making memes.
Yeah, but I mean, come on.
I know.
Pretty.
It's Bo. Uh, you used to be city council?
Oh, I will never be on city council.
Did you, did you used to be? I thought you were part of something.
Chamber.
Oh, Chamber of Commerce, that's right.
I was on the, the board of the Chamber of Commerce. I was president for two years. Um, but I'm no longer on the board. I am now, um, an official elected position at the.
That's great.
I don't know if I'll, uh, uh, it was a tough decision for me to run for school board again this year. It's, it's a time command, but sometimes it's, I, I kind of.
I kind of like what you're doing though.
I struggle, I struggle with the idea of like, you know, what do I have to bring, you know?
But you could be doing worse things. There could be other things you'd be out there doing, wasting your time on.
I could be starting Gmail accounts with Eden Claw reviews.
Guys, I officially resigned. I thought of the greatest idea ever.
Salon Bonita, you have no idea what's about to hit you. The CrossFit gym. Whoa. Hey, we're getting real. That's why I call it the real Eden Claw Facebook.
The real Eden Claw Facebook. Wow. It's, it's, if you're from Eden Claw, you would understand.
Which most of you people are.
Probably. Uh, we do have some weird people. I've got, uh, gosh, I got two listeners in Africa. I got a couple of listeners in South America. I don't, I mean, just.
So do you know if it's the same person that downloads it?
Uh, it says one, so I'm assuming it's one person.
Have I ever told you about the, the Chieftain's jersey in Africa?
Yeah.
Where?
It was, uh, Pat Thomas, yeah.
Pat, one of Pat Thomas's buddies from college.
Kip Kratley's, uh, jersey.
So like I, I was telling someone that story and I like, like I went through Pat Thomas's Facebook page to find that picture. You know, I'm just gonna text him to send it to me because it is like one of the greatest pictures of all time.
It's insane.
Just this guy and just this African market, mean, and very dark skinned with a full on Chieftain's basketball.
Chieftain's basketball shirt or jersey.
It's so awesome.
Um, yeah, it's nuts. It's nuts. It's nuts out there. So appreciate everyone listening. You feeling better?
Yeah, I'm feeling good. My headaches, my, my headaches is, are now gone.
Avoid the text chain. That's, that's my, that's my future diagnosis is just avoid the text chain.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah. Uh, do, be, be like.
You guys can find me at, uh, real Eden Claw reviews at gmail dot com.
With a real email, what was it? Real, real.
Eden Claw reviews at gmail dot com. I think I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna have to. But like, I really like, want to give like, it's just like, oh, then like I can give you my true, true critique.
Yeah.
Of the different.
Charcuterie boards.
The, the different Mexican restaurants.
Absolutely.
The different teriyaki.
Churches, teriyakis.
Different churches.
We're, we're, that's what I'm saying. Like we're known for churches, restaurants.
The best place to get a coffee.
And coffee shops.
Thirty stands of them.
Yeah. It's all we got. We got, we actually, for a small town, we got quite a bit of crap crammed into it. So, uh, everyone.
All those out of towners want to move on in here, get out of, get off my lawn.
Is that?
Trump twenty twenty. Lock her, lock her up.
Get off my lawn, but park my neighbors. We're just like Nantucket.
Park my car. Park my car in the yard. Oh, that was a terrible one.
Louisiana. You were down there in New Orleans.
I can do an old, old, good old man, but I don't want to do it. No, no, I, I, that's one thing is I can't do karaoke and I, I can't, like, I'm not a drama guy.
Why can't you do karaoke?
I'm just awful. Like, I am so bad with music lyrics. It's like, you know, in Friends or it's like, like, what is it? Hold me closer, Tiny Dancer, but she thinks it's Hold Me Closer Tony Danza or something like that.
That's you.
I'm the Tony Danza guy. Like my wife, super good with lyrics.
Agreed.
Yeah. And like movie, like my wife like has this like weird thing and she can watch a movie once and like recite the whole movie like, like.
Word for word.
Word for word. Dumb and Dumber like through and through.
Yeah.
But like me, I got, I can do movie lines, okay. But like, that's why I don't know if I, I, I don't like rap music that much. I don't even know what the heck they're saying.
Well, that's me too, but you just kind of pretend you know what they do. Act like you know, Chico. They say Gco, G code, Rico. I don't know any of that. So, but uh-oh, such a ching chang, here comes the hot stepper. And then for the longest time I thought it was Wordamup, but it was Murderer.
Well.
So again, I'm terrible with.
Well, I think I passed that gene on to my son. So my son is fanatic about like movies.
Did you watch the UFC fight? I'm cutting you off. Did you see the UFC fight?
Which one?
Were, you were at Bobby's before I.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you see the old guy? The, the, that, like the forty-five year old, forty-two year old that beat the crap out of, or like eventually the other guy submitted.
The Russian guy?
Yeah.
My, my brother.
He looked like, yeah, I took a picture of it. But as you started looking at it, it looked like an old, an older Oscar. I was thinking that looked like your son more than anything.
So Oscar, Oscar, we love Oscar. Oscar's just our sweet soul of our family. He's the middle child. He's five, just turned five and Oscar loves Mulan. And he loves the movie Mama Mia. Through and through, like it's, we watch Mama Mia and Mama Mia two at least two times. And like literally he'll be like, I'm Harry. And I'm like, oh no, you're not Harry. It's like, you're not, you're not Harry. It's like, Harry's a character from Mama Mia. And he's like, and it's like, oh, you can be, and I'm like, no, I'm not going to be that Oscar. And he'd be like, kisses the fire burning, burning. And then like he'll just start singing like, like, and like he just sing and like just full on like, yeah. And it's like.
I love it.
Oh, he loves Mama Mia.
Wait, but hey, and then around the Halloween time though.
It's Hocus Pocus.
Hocus Pocus.
Yeah. And it's like, it's like, and it's so fine. Like we'll tell him, like, we'll go to my parents' house and take, so me and my brother or someone in the family be like, hey, Oscar, go ask Papa, which is called my dad, go ask Papa if, uh, if he can turn on Hocus Pocus. So literally he'll walk over to my dad and go, Papa, Hocus Pocus? And my dad's like, no, Oscar. He's, he'll go, oh, hey Papa, Hocus Pocus? And then he'll do it like maybe fifty times. Like he has no like recall of like how many times he's asked him. He'll just be like, Hocus Pocus, Papa, hey, Hocus Pocus? And my dad was just like, fine, Oscar. He'll just turn it. So it's Hocus Pocus, but then like, we'll tell Oscar, like, we'll be like, hey, Hocus Pocus, uh, is, um, it's on vacation. Like they're on holiday.
Yeah.
No Hocus Pocus. Now like we've got to the point where he kind of understands that the vacation doesn't work. Well, just because we're, we're on YouTube TV.
Right.
We'll be like, Oscar, it's deleted. Sorry bud. But one day he was on my Amazon, on Amazon and like I got all these email alerts the next day. And Oscar went in and bought sixty dollars with a digital like movies. I have four versions of The Lion King on Amazon.